We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. It's good to see everyone this afternoon, and I appreciate everyone coming to the workshop of the Tifton City Council. And just a reminder that our workshop is a meeting where we discuss the items that we'll be voting on at our next meeting, so there won't be any official action or anything taken tonight, it'll just be discussion on items. So, the first item that we need to discuss is a public hearing submitted by SummerCo requesting to rezone approximately .28 acres at 302 Commerce Way. Can I take that? Rob?
This is going to be a public meeting on application number Z-17000.002. First, I want to let everybody know the procedures are available for, you know, public inspection, Tifton's grid and public hearing procedures, the standards for exercising zoning powers, as well as a copy of Georgia's Conflict of Laws is available for inspection and also posted for review. This is the application by SummerCo Incorporated to reclassify approximately .28 acres of land located at 302 Commerce Way from its current classification, general business, to commercial downtown. This time I'd like to ask the city council some questions regarding their consideration of this matter. Has any of these applicants or opponents to the application contributed at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years?
No.
No.
Who are the ... It's SummerCo Incorporated.
Who is that?
Houston, do you know who the ...
Carson Somers.
Carson Somers.
Yeah, Carson. He's the owner of the building.
Carson Somers.
Uh-huh, he's out of Cordial.
No.
Carson Somers. Yeah, out of Cordial. Okay.
Do you or any of your members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of the property, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest in any real property that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of the property, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Counsel, this is a reminder, I think we have two apps, and those will be taken up actually for adoption at our next regular meeting, so while we need to ask those conflict questions again with the entire council. At this time, I'm going to ask Houston Schultz, our environmental director, to come up and tell us about the proposed application, as well as recommendations of staff and the planning zoning commission.
Mayor, council. Mr. Dan Richardson is the agent for SummerCo Incorporated, and he's asked that we rezone this from general business to commercial downtown. This is .28 acres, as Mr. Wilmont had described. This property is in the downtown character area, which is the same character area as the DDA, Downtown Development Authority area. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted and heard this on August 14th, 2017, and unanimously approved it.
And staff recommendations?
Staff recommendation, yes, our staff recommendation at that meeting is that you approve it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah. The purpose of going from a general business to a commercial downtown, and what could they do, what can they not do in a commercial downtown if they could?
Well, for this piece of property, over the years, it's always been an issue on parking. Parking's been the biggest holdup. So this will allow them not to have to follow the Land Development Code's parking.
So general business has that parking ...
Yes, sir.
Commercial downtown does not?
Commercial downtown does not have any parking.
It allows them to use the on-street parking, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Is it part of their parking?
And the city's parking lot.
So the change is only for parking? That's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No questions.
All right, I'll take anybody watching speaking in favor of the application first, and then if you want to hear, I'd like to speak in favor of the application.
We switched stuff up, Johnny. We switched.
If anyone here is not going to speak, we can opposition to the application. Relax. You know what I said, man? I can go back, you know? We don't have a call.
Sit down. We just, we just checked. Sorry, we're having our little ...
Go ahead. Mayor and council, there'll be no public comment. I ask the public hearing closed.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, the next item on our agenda is a special presentation, and this is a proclamation advocating Adult Education and Family Literacy Week and Literacy Day. And I've got the proclamation here, and I would like to ask all of our friends with our literacy volunteer group to come join us down in front. I just want you to come down this way. It's good to see everybody. Good to see you, Ms. Bonnie. How are you doing?
Hi.
Carolyn West.
Carolyn, it's very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks.
Good to see you. Always good to see you, Megan. How are you?
Sharon.
Very nice to see everybody. All right, well, we have a proclamation here on behalf of the City of Tifton, so I will read this and then present this to you, Bonnie. And again, this is a proclamation for Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, and the proclamation says, "Whereas one in five adults cannot read or write, in Georgia roughly 1.1 million adults over the age of 18 have not completed high school or received a GED diploma, and whereas illiteracy rates are highest among the economically disadvantaged and are closely associated with unemployment, high crime rates, and welfare dependency, and whereas parents who cannot read or write perpetuate an intergenerational cycle of illiteracy, as they lack the skills to teach their own children such daily tasks as how to read a medicine bottle, follow a bus schedule, do comparative shopping, make correct change, or complete school homework. And whereas illiteracy is a social problem of American society, which can be alleviated through increased public awareness and broader support for volunteer literacy programs on the local, state, and national levels, and whereas 20% of the adults in the City of Tifton lack a high school diploma or a GED certificate, and whereas residents of Tifton benefit from the services offered by the literacy volunteers of the Tifton-Tiff County group, which include basic skills instruction, GED preparation, GED test fee scholarships, and English language classes, and whereas the community's support of literacy volunteers in Tifton-Tiff County helps to improve the quality of life where we all live and work, and now therefore I, Julie Smith, Mayor of the City of Tifton, do hereby proclaim September 4th through 8th as Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, and September 8th as Literacy Day in Tifton, Georgia, and it's signed by me and Jessica Jones, our St. Flurrie." Thank you for all of the work that you do. I've seen firsthand many of the great things that you've done to help people to further their education, and literacy is so important, and like the proclamation says, if you can't read and write, it makes it very difficult to dysfunction as someone in society's community citizen. So I'm going to present you this proclamation, and thank you very much for all the work that you do for the citizens of this community. And I have a t-shirt for you. Literacy is a lifestyle. Excellent. It is a lifestyle. Thank you. I'm a literacy volunteer here, so thank you. Julie's been on a winning team. I'd like to invite everyone to come to our Carnival of Knowledge, which is September 28th, and introduce those who are here. Carolyn West is our transition specialist at Southern Regional Technical College here in Tifton and the other campuses as well. One of our newest tutors who is working today, Michael Dalton, and our president of literacy volunteers is Victor Pyres, and our immediate past president is Sharonda Murphy-Hinton. So thank you so much. Thank you for what you do. And everyone, study all your trivia. It's really a fun event, the Carnival of Knowledge. It's really, it's a challenge. It's not having a hard question. And Dottie Freeman is our mistress of the ... Oh, boy, that'd be fun. She used to come up for a free spaghetti dinner and watch our trivia experts that night. Well, thank you very much. Thank you so much that you do. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's always nice to have groups working to help each other in our community. Our next item on the agenda is to, a presentation by Loretta Hilton, which is with the South Georgia Regional Commission, to talk about our comprehensive plan update. Loretta, just approach the mic here, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. As you are probably aware, it is time to update your comprehensive plan. We have the workbook ready, and we are going to a public hearing with Tiff County on September 11th at 6:00 PM, and any of you may attend this public hearing if you would like. Our first workshop will be held on October 18th from 10:00 AM in the morning until 12:00 PM. It will be located at your Chamber of Commerce, and we have sent emails out to the stakeholders, but if you know of anyone, or if you weren't on that list, everyone is welcome to come participate, because it is your city and your county, and we would like to have a lot of people there participating. As you're aware, a comprehensive plan is the official statement of the city's vision for its future. It expresses your community goals for the county and the cities, and it's a recommendation, that guide that follows your zoning laws and the decisions regarding land uses. It addresses future developments and your capital improvements, and I think probably a year or two ago, you did the assessment on your work program to see where you were at with the projects that you had listed in your current comprehensive plan. The plan looks 20 years into the future, but we go every two years and try, do assessments, and then in five years, we do the updates. The comprehensive plan was adopted by Tiff County, there were some wrong dates in the memo that you had, that it was actually adopted in August of 2008. Tiff County has experienced a lot of growth since the plan was adopted in 2008, so therefore we need to all work together and try to get this updated, so it will benefit your community, so that you would be able to apply for grants or any money, funding that's available. The character area is part of the comprehensive plan, and it establishes your future vision for your city and county, and it will be implemented, like I said, through your zoning. The comprehensive plan's divided into three parts. The first part is your goals, issues, and opportunities, which the workshop scheduled, as I said, on October 18th. We will be discussing economic development, natural and cultural resources, community facilities and services, your housing needs, land use and transportation, intergovernmental coordination, which is usually an issue in all the counties. It's not uncommon for anywhere, and we will be discussing the population. The second workshop will be the Community Work Program, and as I stated, the Community Work Program is to see what projects that you would like to go forward with in the future for the next five years, and so that we can address those in a comprehensive plan, so that when you do get ready to apply for funding or grants, that you, yes, this was in our comprehensive plan, and that allows you to get more money from the government. The third phase, the third workshop will be the future land use maps, and you, we will look and see where you want to go in the future with the land, with your land area. There probably won't be a lot of major changes, but I'm sure that you probably have some areas that you would like to see developed as some other type of use, and this is why it's very important that cities and county does get involved with this. There will be three public hearings scheduled, as I stated, next Monday, well, yes, September 11th will, at 6:00 PM, will be the kickoff meeting, the official public hearing for the kickoff meeting. The second public hearing will be for the public's comments and transmittal of our draft to the Department of Community Affairs, and the third public hearing will be the final adoption of the comprehensive plan. And I can, if you would like, get you a copy of the workbook. I have it completed, I can get it to you, where you can review it before the public hearing, and if you're not able to be there, or if you just want to look at it prior to that meeting, so you'll see, and just remember, it's just a workbook. You'll probably find, see old information that was in your, in your current comprehensive plan, but that's why we have these workshops, to get together and update it. And that's where we're at, and I'm looking forward to working with the cities and counties.
I've not been through this process before, and I know he has, and he'll certainly be guiding us through this. What is the procedure for public input? I know that, you know, there are public meetings that open. I know we've got some folks here in the group tonight that are, that I think would be very interested, our TAGA group, and I know that they're very concerned with different things. So how does all of that work? How does the public?
I think a lot of those are on the stakeholders' list.
Okay.
Should have received the email. If not, you can contact me at Regional Commission, I'll get you on that list, but it's very important that these groups do take an active role in it, because this is their community.
Exactly.
And I know a lot of them, you know, are with a bypass.
Right.
Rails and trails, rails to trails, and I've worked with that for years when I was a city and county planner, but it's important that they get involved, so we make sure that we have everybody, every group's interest in this plan, and, I mean, if you know of someone, I think I emailed a copy of it to a lot of people with the city. I think Jessica has a copy. If you see someone that's not on the list that you'd like me to add, just please let me know, because it's very important. I mean, I'd love to see 100 people come out.
Right, I would too, yeah.
You know, and really get involved with it.
We need to introduce you to, make sure that you get with our representative from the Tifton Gazette, he, who provides lots of good information. Of course, we've got our TV media here as well, so we make sure we have a good turnout, because we, I think it's very important for people to participate, and, like you said, it's their city. It's not, it's not just ours. It's, you know, we need to all be involved in that conversation. I do think it would be helpful for us to have those workbooks, though, to, so that we can, I don't think any of us have been through this process. Johnny, you've probably been through a comp plan process before, haven't you?
Yeah.
So Johnny, Johnny's, well, you know, he would be familiar, but I think it would be helpful for us to have that.
This is my first time working on this side of it. I've always worked with cities and counties. I did work with a regional commission in early 2000s, but the most of my experience is working with the cities and counties and having someone to come in and help us put ours together, and it is, I mean, I can't stress enough, it's important for everyone to get involved.
And that meeting that's happening, the public hearing, the kickoff meeting on September the 11th at 6:00 PM at the Board of Commissioners meeting?
Correct.
That, will that meeting allow for public input at that point in time, or is that just to say we're kicking it off?
I'm not sure how they do that. They may allow public comment, I'm not sure.
Okay, okay.
But it's more of a kickoff meeting, and when, when we take a lot of the comments, I mean, we actually write them down, and the majority of people say, yes, we want this in our plan. That will happen at the workshops.
Okay, okay.
But nowadays, the public will get opportunity before we submit the draft, final draft to Department of Community Affairs, the public will have the opportunity to make comments. You'll have it on your website, and you'll have it available here. We'll have it on our website and available in the office, and so will the cities, so they will still have a chance to make public comments.
Okay, can we get the scheduled meetings on, on our government channel and our website and everything? Can we do that, so that everybody's got access? Okay. Okay.
Just a couple of things, Mayor Council. Number one, as we contract with our seat of regional commission to help us with the comp plan, very, very detailed document, certain requirements that we have to do to be in the state, we have to have this done by June of 18th, if I remember correctly.
Right.
So, very specific process, so that's first, talking with the county. The county manager did acknowledge that we are to work on this together. He knows that, and it's been very cordial as far as getting us started, coming together with the details, because it is about the county and the city.
Sure.
As we work the plan. And then thirdly, this is the comp plan, it's pretty thick, and I was going to make you a copy of the front part, so you can see, but if it's the same in the world, then I'm waiting to see that.
Okay.
It'll get you up to speak before the public hearing.
Perfect.
The Department of Community Affairs now wants it condensed, so it will actually be about this size.
Okay.
But you'll still have this to go back, fall back on.
Okay.
That's your 10-year plan, but when we update it now, it has gone from that big book to this.
Right.
So it's important to get in there what you really need.
Absolutely. You better believe it. Okay, any other questions, Ms. Hilton? Okay, thank you so much. Looking forward to working with you. Thank you. All right, we're going to add a little line here on our agenda. I'd like to call on Houston Schultz. Houston, if you would, I think we have someone new in your department you'd like to introduce us to.
We do, we do. Mr. Stephan, come on up. This is Mr. Stephan Peirman. This is an exciting day for us, because we've added another code enforcement officer. Let me thank council for allocating the monies in order for the position, and Mr. Pete, who was probably bogged down, working with us sometime, reviewing applications, making sure we had the right person for the job. This job really takes someone that has a great attitude, and I think we have it with Mr. Peirman.
Excellent. And I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Stephan Peirman.
Stephan Peirman. Well, it's very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Welcome to the City of Tifton. We're glad to have you with us.
Looking forward to it.
Very good, all right.
Happy to be here.
Well, good. Keep an eye on that one right there. No, Houston, that's good.
That's good, Bruce, but I'm glad you're part of us.
Well, thank you. We're glad to have you. Thank you so much. And then I'd also like to call on Captain Steve Hyman. He'd like to make an introduction for us, give us some information, some exciting information.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to introduce Officer Ed Yarver. He comes to us with wealth and knowledge and experience. He has over 33 years of experience as a law enforcement officer. He's a post instructor in firearms, speed detection, defensive tactics, and emergency medical, and general instructor. Officer Yarver has completed his FTO program with us, and he's now a school resource officer.
Excellent.
And up until last Tuesday, he and I were good friends, but after he tased me, we're no longer friends.
That would, that would probably make me feel the same way, because I understand what you're saying.
But other than that little incident, he's a good officer, and he's going to be a good asset to Tifton Police Department, the City of Tifton, and our community, because he does bring a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge, and he's going to be able to help us do a lot of training and stuff like that.
Excellent.
We appreciate him coming back to work with us. He's worked with us in the past, and we appreciate him coming back, and I know y'all will see him around and also get a chance to meet him and talk to him and see that he is a fine fellow.
Excellent.
When he's not tasing.
When he's not, when he doesn't have the taser and say it.
Sergeant Yarver is a certified instructor for tasers, and I've asked the chief, and all three of them, to come and just kind of give you just another update on where we are with that.
Okay.
I gave you that news Friday, just to make sure you understand what we're doing and why, and if you had a chance to ask questions. And Captain Hyman, he's riding, I sent you that video, and everybody saw you do that, but it's been really impressive to see the department come together and commend the chief and the staff for being now leading the edge in where we're putting officers and what we're doing with the department service and stuff. So Sergeant, you've kind of given up on where we were on the tasers and what you've done.
Well, last Tuesday and Thursday, we finally got all the tasers in, we got all the department together, and you probably ended up tasing about 20 different officers. I've been a taser instructor for about 20 years. The taser is what it's normally called, but officially it's a CED, it's Conducted Electric Weapon. And the best way to explain it is like grabbing an electric fence, except it's just a little bit more voltage. You hear people say it's, you know, 50,000 volts going through your body. That's true, but volts don't kill you, amps do. The taser is a less than lethal weapon. In other words, if someone still presents us with a knife, a bat, a pistol, shotgun, whatever, where deadly force is reasonable to be used, then we'll always go to a sidearm, to our firearm. The taser's not designed for that. The taser is designed for someone that's agitated, actively resisting, or trying to flee, and we don't want him to get away to hurt someone else. There have been incidents with tasers over the years. They've actually been in service for about 20-plus years, but they're normally due to people falling and being injured, or fatality, or the fact that you're just so medically induced with cocaine, heroin, alcohol, bad hearts, just overall bad health things of that nature. But the fact that we had at least 20-plus officers, including Captain Hyman, the lieutenants, several of the school resource officers, that got a voluntary exposure, just like I tell folks when I get asked, if, you know, have you ever been tased? As an instructor, several, several times, over and over. So with this one here, this is called an X2, just briefly. This is the top of the line. Can I come around a little bit?
Sure, sure, please. If you need to point at someone, point at them.
Yeah. So this is the X2, okay? The X2 is one of the newest models. It's called a semi-automatic, and the reason it's called that is because it has two cartridges here. The old ones have just one square that you always had to reload if you ever missed a target. This one here, when you pull the trigger one time, cartridge on the left goes off, two probes come out, they hit your exposure, your subject, you know, it's put five seconds worth, you can juice into them as you will, and then it simply stops. If you need to re-energize it, there's what is called an arc switch on the sign here that you can push, that re-energizes it, or it gives them what we call a drive. Say if I got somebody on the ground, I don't know what's under their arms, I don't know if it's a weapon, whatever, if I have a cover off or covering him or hurt a weapon, like I can turn the laser on or the taser on, which is on now. Relax, chief, I'm good. Now all I'm going to do is I'm going to hit the arc switch, and the arc switch, what's good, is I can push this button, and my cartridge don't go off. So I'm going to push it, it gets down there, and you see the arc of it. Okay, and I can hold it there for five seconds until he or she... All the information is stored on the back here, it tells you which cartridge is a which, your battery, how long the exposure was, how many times you pulled the trigger, and everything else. And the way, of course, it changed, you can kind of look on the wall, the light is over there. You see you got the top switch, a laser, and you got the bottom one, flashing. So if I was to pull the trigger right now, and went to where the red dot is, I'll go with the bottom red dot. They all come with a flash button. So it's a great weapon. I am just simply thrilled that Tifton was actually to get them. It does save lives on both ends of spectacles. It cuts down on a lot of injuries to the officers and a lot of injuries to the public, or the person you're trying to arrest if you were. I heard you mentioned earlier about having a medical issue maybe. This, the testing has been done on several different types of individuals. The only thing that taser recommends is what is called a dart, a heart ratio. Basically, you don't put the taser over somebody's heart, pull the trigger. So the pros are from the target, or the heart, and the better it is. It's a good weapon. I don't think it's been deployed yet, I can't wait for it to pick up, but all the officers that have been exposed to it, they're well aware of it. If you ever had any more questions, I'd be interested to find. If you would like to get exposed, we do have a form that you can fill out, and we set that up, if you get exposed, you have firsthand knowledge of what it feels like. The good thing about the taser, once it's over, it's a dosy spray, lasts forever. Taser, five, 15 seconds later, you're good, not a problem. Thanks, Sergeant.
Thank you, Sergeant Yarver.
Thank you.
And I think we're all probably going to pass on that exposure. We'll take your word.
Sorry, that would be a shock to the article.
Oh, Wes, wow.
I'd hear all of it.
Lord. Medians out of work everywhere, and then we've got Wes. All right, that's an impressive report. Thank you. Thank you, chief, for all that. The next item on our agenda is the crematory committee recommendation. That's Jeff Robbins. I'll call on Jeff. Jeff was part of a committee that we put together, and we appreciate his service.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
County Commissioners, City Manager. Again, my name is Jeff Robbins, and I want to thank the mayor and the city commissioners for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Citizens Crematory Committee. Our committee consists of Curtis Akins, Barbara Mullenix, Chris Bales, myself. We had input from Mr. Houston Schultz, Rob Wilmont, and Ms. Jones. First, let me say, it was a pleasure to serve on this committee. It was enlightening. We, I think as a group, we learned a lot. Our committee was asked to review and evaluate the environmental impact, health impact, and appropriate zoning requirements for crematories within the city limits. Our committee met three times. May 8th, the committee met for the first time. Mr. Wilmont reviewed with the committee members the purpose and the expectations of the committee and its members. We reviewed local ordinances, state laws, regulations for standalone crematories, along with the 2012 State of Georgia Senate report on crematories, and also the Department of Public Health reports. On May 31st, we met for a second time, and we reviewed our own research that we had as a group. We also toured a local crematory. We discussed with the owner his business model, how the process of cremation worked, the process by which bodies are processed through his facility. And our fourth and final was on July fifth, where we reviewed our findings and reported back to staff. We did ask Mr. Wilmont one more time to review the current ordinances for the city, has in place for zoning of crematories. And after one last discussion, we made our recommendations to staff. After evaluations of the purpose and concerns, the committee collectively agreed that the zoning requirements for crematories were appropriate. We do not feel any changes need to be made. The committee did suggest allowing one crematory per funeral home and required utilization, state inspection documentations, and malfunction reports to be submitted annually with the business license renewal.
Very good. Thank you so much. Any questions regarding the committee's findings? Thank you all very much for serving. You really helped us.
It was enlightening and interesting.
Very good. Well, thank you.
We're done?
We appreciate that. All right, the next item on our agenda is the review of bids received for the gas main location. That is going to be presented by Jeff West.
Mayor and Councilor, come before you to get your request on approval of the bids for the relocation of the gas main on Eleventh Street. Purpose of this, two reasons. One, the gas main is exposed in the bottom of the ditch. It's a four-inch gas main. Second reason is so that we can repipe the crossing right there and improve the area altogether. We are recommending going with Little River Contractors, low bid of thirty-four thousand dollars.
Okay. And that information's in our packet. Does anyone have any questions, Jeff, regarding the bid process or the project?
I want to, Councilor, about Eleventh Street and the bridge and looking out, there was an issue with that sinking. School bus would go over it and bust a tip. And he and I talked about that a few times together and we have it temporarily repaired. But while Jeff looked at it, we discovered two things. When the gas main is exposed over a ditch like that, very, very dangerous. Why it was done, there's no telling. Again, just a real bad situation. And the pipe is now, it's tilting at a degree. So again, furthermore, it just needs to be underground. And second, looking at the two, the culverts underneath the ground, the entire bottom was gone in the pipes. So when that water flows, there's no telling what's being done. So when we have the gas line fixed and buried like it should, and public works is going to come and replace the two pipes, and when we do that, we're generally, but great project and something that Johnny should be proud of.
Yeah.
He sure saw it.
That's good, Johnny.
That's good stuff in the neighborhoods that people recognize. Never see, this is the point, never see what's happening underneath the ground.
Right, right.
The kids bouncing up and down on the gas line, unfortunately, that is just, that is just not a good situation. So, thank you.
Well, good job, Councilman Ralph. We're very proud of you for taking care of that. The two of his constituents. All right, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is by Mr. Wayne Patnall, discussion of allowing the advertising insult. Let me try them again. Inserts, not insults. I thought it was a Freudian slip, wasn't it? All right, Wayne?
Madam Mayor, after the last work session, a quick review of what were being proposed. The company that does our utility bill is called Municode. And they came to us saying that they can have a program where you can put advertising slips in your utility bills. You can get paid twenty-five cent per slip be added to one of the bills. Mr. Grant, who's the president, said we mail out approximately eleven thousand two hundred bills every month. With that twenty-five cent per insert, because one insert, we could get reimbursed twenty-eight hundred dollars that used all set our mailing of all of our utility bills. We currently have budgeted twenty-four thousand dollars for utility bills. So we could actually reduce that down, hopefully, almost down to nothing if we went this way. I remember y'all asked me a couple of questions to ask Mr. Grant after the last session. First one was about worried about the city being endorsing whoever puts it in there. He said there would be something written on the thing saying this is not an endorsement by the city of Tifton. So there will be no endorsement. It will be saying weird, this is not an endorsement by the city on the advertising. He also would include, before the program begins, an insert explaining the program to the customers that both the people, just you and me, and then also the businesses out there. He actually sent me a copy of a advertisement. I'll give y'all copies of one that was. And his hope is putting this in there would be what he asking, having somebody from, say, California, New York, putting advertising here, they're gonna try to keep that with businesses within fifty to a hundred miles of Tifton. So it'll be somebody that's not gonna be far away trying to pull it. It'll be local folks. They will also, one of the things they said he did tell me is they would screen advertisers. And so if there's something that y'all, as the board, does not want to have in there, we can let them know, hey, we have an issue with anything like a particular type of business putting something in there. They could then screen that out so they wouldn't be able to. His preference is local first. He said, you ask about, well, how does everybody know? He said, we could use this to put up on our website. We could put it in mailers, go out before we start at the bills so people have a chance. We could put it even on the government channel also. We could even promote it, even if we wanted to add a chamber meetings that we're doing this, to get it out to the businesses. On the flip side, he said, if it grows well, he said, you may have to set up where it's first come, first served on who gets to go in, because you can only put in three inserts in a bill. Also, if there's a lot of interest in it, you may only, he said, you may limit how many times a year somebody can do it. Because if you get a lot of folks wanting, businesses putting advertising in there, you may say you can do it once every six months. You may only get to do it once a year, because at most you're gonna have thirty-six inserts in a year. That could limit how many times you get to if it does turn out that way. So this is, and he also told me about, he even has a short video at a show, it's a Vimeo, Vimeo video showing how the advertising thing works. So if anybody has any interest, take a look at that. Ask me and I'll give you the website address so you can take a look at that. He sent it to me in an email and I'll gladly show you that also.
Have we talked to any cities that are doing this right now?
I had, the only one he told me about was Auburn, was one doing it so far. It's something, this is something fairly new that they're doing. And I know one of the big issues we talked about last time was, people may complain about, oh, there's one more piece of junk in my bill, but at the same time, I know a lot of stuff I see in mine, a lot of stuff goes straight to the trash can, unfortunately. And it's advertising stuff other places are already doing. Because I know, I think I see some stuff, like some of my credit card bills or any other things I get in the mail, there's always something extra in there. Seems like promoting something else.
If we move forward with this and we're not happy, can we cancel this at any point in time? So we're not obligated to continue?
No. No, if you go in, say, three, six months down the line, not wanna do anymore, we can just stop doing it.
And it does prohibit us from being able to put our own material information in?
No, we can put in our own information in there. Ours would take precedence over anything else. It's because if we put extra stuff in there, then we won't have the ability to put advertising in there that particular month.
Can we be given, you know, thirty days' notice of what advertising is gonna look like going into this?
I would think they would gladly help us, show us.
Basically, if this were Papa John's, we would give a notification a month ahead of this going in there, whether or not.
I would assume Mr. Grant would allow us to do that. Give us a heads up what's coming in there. Give us, he would, because he told us there's one company already that would love to put it in there. And it's a company that does inspections on foundations. And so I know he's told us that's the one that wants to do it. I mean, he would tell, I could talk to him. He would probably gladly say, okay, this is who's interested. Y'all have any problems with it?
I'd like to see what, you know.
He's got on this, it says that ad content must be appropriate for all audiences and will be approved by the city before it's cleared for distribution. So I would say we would appoint a staff person to look at that and then address any issues.
And if you have any other questions, you can give to me and I can get ahold of Mr. Grant and he's pretty responsive in answering any questions we have.
Were we looking at electronic billing too? I seem to remember a discussion we had.
Yeah, we have electronic. That will be coming, about electronic billing will be coming up with our new software upgrade that is in the process with that. We won't be, our utility bill and part of that won't be coming online till either end of next February. It's coming up February or into March.
Now, electronic billing, this would not affect, this would not be part of that then?
No.
We would not be having ads with the electronic bills?
Because electronic bills would just be going out by like email. I don't think there's a way you can add it in there. This is what's going into the mail, into the envelopes itself. It's going out to folks who gets a regular bill.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Wayne? Johnny, you got any questions or anything?
Okay.
All right, thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome.
All right, our next item for discussion is the NGAG Main Street Financing Program. Donna Tate. I'll present the information about that.
Mayor, Councilor? We have been approached by some marketing staff of Municipal Gas Authority. They do a lot of stuff for us in the background as far as keeping commercials, eight-one-one, call before you dig, and that sort of thing. This is a really great program. Other cities and surrounding towns have been involved with it and we have been approached by the Gas Authority, want to know, see if we would be interested. What this is, this Main Street Financing Program, is designed for residential customers only since natural gas is a choice. If they needed to replace, say, a heat unit, there's a sixty-month, zero-percentage loan from the Gas Authority to the customer to cover the installation, the plumbing, all of everything to install that. And then up to five thousand dollars. And then what the city's responsibility would be, one, they would have to be a good standing customer of the city and then it would be up to their discretion to proceed with this customer between the Gas Authority and the customer. The city itself is not actually liable for the loan itself, but we would put the monthly payment on their utility statements along with their regular bill. There would be advertising blitz for, we'd probably do the fall of this year. It's a really great time to put it out now because the football season and now that it's getting fall again, we want people to think about that Tifton does have this, you know, this gas available and this would be a great way for somebody to be able to replace one of their units at a very low cost for them. Well, just the cost of whatever the installation and the equipment is itself.
And it would be for any gas appliance?
Exactly.
So fit pot water heater or stove or dryer or anything?
Exactly. Or I would imagine up to whatever, up to five thousand dollars if they were doing some renovation. It is also available for landlords and property owners if they have rental property and they want to go in and redo those homes. That loan would be separate for each single family dwelling. And so it's really good program. It's, they do it in Moultrie and Albany and some more surrounding towns.
Where else?
Thomasville, Cairo.
Thomasville, Cairo. And they've been doing it for quite a few years.
This really is a great program. Roger and Donna, so we talked about this. We have not done much in the way of the market to get appliances out there and that's only a way we're gonna grow the business. So now's the opportunity to do that. We've been in conversations with Municipal Gas Authority representative on the marketing side and say, how can we get our product out there? How can we sell more gas? That's what heads the mainstream. It's just really for everybody, if you want to upgrade or you're building a new house or you want to change out, this is an opportunity for them to do it. City doesn't have any responsibility, but hand in hand with marketing. If we don't get our name out there, we don't get the capabilities out there, then we'll obviously never see the revenues and our system grow. So I'd like to recommend that we do the Main Street Financing Program number one. But in addition, I'd like to go ahead and spend about maybe a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars a month for the next three months to do some marketing-type programs for our gas system. And I just wanted to give you a glimpse of a couple of commercials. This would be part of the program. This is what they would do. They'd be the NGAG to get our name out there, to air during football, just to put the bug in the ear that, hey, I can do this. Who do I call? Tifton has this available. So Jonathan, if you could play, please.
Hey, Becca.
This is a sample of marketing program. I think this was on a whole. Thank you, Jonathan. Those are just little clips. I like you and there's nothing better than having a restaurant that we can feature and talk about natural gas. Getting the word out here, I just, I want you to get a glimpse and I'd serve as a manager for us to do that. It's in the budget and something that we definitely need to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Roger, any? We missed?
We're good. All right, thank you, Donna. Appreciate that. Thank you, Becca. All right, Pete, the next item is yours to talk about Georgia Economic and Community Development Service.
Thank you. Real quickly, again, into marketing. We're starting to look at little things a little differently when you talk about economic development, working with the chamber. But I wanted to share with you a new partnership, Electric Cities of Georgia, has teamed up with Municipal Gas Authority. And if you're a member of NGAG, you were offered this market-type marketing package. And what this includes is a profile and what's called tapestry. Really, what this is, designed to hit all the main areas with regards to economic development within the community. I gave you a snapshot. This is not, this is not complete, but if you want to thumb through it, it talks about everything from consumer spending to households, to income, population by age. And then it talks about, you know, what are the needs actually in your city? This is based off of spending. All this information is available through these databases. And Electric Cities of Georgia specializes in this. There's a couple other co-ops and EMCs that also do this. But the relationship that we have with NGAG and could be with Electric Cities of Georgia puts us really in a great spot to provide something like this. And they could produce the maps about employers. They could do mileage. They could talk about traffic counts, etc. in regard to vacant properties. This is just really a pretty huge tool that we could use here in Tifton to not only share with the chamber, but understanding what we have to offer in the way of property, where our spending is happening. And then it gives NBA or Industrial Development Authority more ammunition to. And then it gives, you know, NDA or Industrial Development Authority more ammunition to talk about Tifton and they actually market the city if you subscribe to this. So again, it's a marketing effort. It's going to be about thirteen thousand dollars a year, and in turn, we get everything from reports to maps to data, to then actually going out and soliciting Tifton. So it really is a great, great opportunity. I wanted to share that with you and just if you had any questions again, I'm not going to jump into it. I wanted to kind of inch a little closer to what they would offer, how it would look, and get more exact, but something I definitely would want to let you see and decide on if you think it's a good tool.
They would do a profile for the city, because this was just the county. Would you get the city and the county, maybe or just the city?
It would, it would be both.
I think anything we can do to be good partners and good resources for jobs creation is important, so. Comments, questions of Pete regarding this partnership with the Electric Cities of Georgia and Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia?
I'll keep you posted on this and just give you some more data, but I think it would be a great tool for us to use.
Okay. All right, excellent. Thank you for that, Pete. The next item on the agenda is discussion of the curfew ordinance. Pete, Rob, you want to take that?
I think Wes sent out an email to determine whether or not, you know, do we have a curfew ordinance and if we do, what it says. And I took a look at what we currently have in place and did a little research to determine whether or not what we have in place is constitutional. One case out in the ninth district out of San Diego basically used the very words that we have in our ordinance, which is loiter, play, and just basically said it's too vague, it violates heat protection, and therefore they ruled that the San Diego curfew ordinance was unconstitutional. Then there's another case out of the Fifth Circuit, another federal case in Dallas, Texas, that had very, very similar language to our curfew ordinance. And it's very difficult to differentiate between the Dallas ordinance and the San Diego ordinance, but the Fifth Circuit in Dallas held that their curfew ordinance was constitutional with almost very similar language. The difference between the Dallas ordinance and the San Diego ordinance is that there are exceptions and defenses that was in the Dallas ordinance that was not in the San Diego ordinance. So basically, when you have an ordinance such as this, you really have to make sure that it's not too vague or over broad such that you really don't know when or if you're violating the ordinance. I believe that our ordinance is probably closer to the Dallas ordinance that they held constitutional than it is to the San Diego ordinance. But I think that it would probably be better to maybe further narrow the coverage of the curfew ordinance to make sure that we're not over broad and it's not vague. I've talked a couple of times with Chief Dowdy about it, and the Dallas ordinance had, during the weekdays, the curfew was from eleven until six AM and then on the weekends was from midnight until six AM. So I think that may be a little bit better than what we have now, which I think ten PM is maybe a little early, particularly on a weeknight. I see people might want to go to the bowling alley or things like that. So I believe that we could draft the ordinance, tweak it a little bit, maybe change the hours if y'all decide that's appropriate, such that I think it would pass constitutional muster. I did not look at the section regarding the school days. I think we have another separate ordinance dealing with school days from eight AM until three PM. I'm not sure where that falls from a constitutional standpoint, because one of the things that you have to do in order to overcome these constitutional challenges is to show that you have a compelling state interest. And these cases that talk about compelling state interest, they're talking about children out at night, nocturnally, you know, that may cause increase in crime or expose the juveniles to crimes against themselves. So I'm not sure if we can do the eight AM to three PM, but I do have a couple other cases that these two cases cited that I'd like to look at and then maybe come with a revised ordinance for y'all to look at and consider.
You know, I think one of the lines in the ordinance, Rob, basically said that the first offense that if a minor was caught would be a warning. And I was thinking, depending upon the severity of what they're doing or what, where they're at or whatnot, would that be able to, would we be able to make the officers, a judgment call from the officer?
Yes, and matter of fact, the ordinance in Dallas had something very similar, where, you know, the officer was under an obligation to inquire of the juvenile, you know, how old they were and what they were doing to determine whether or not the ordinance was being violated and whether or not the defenses applied. So, you know, one of the things that you have to be concerned about when you talk about the vagueness of an ordinance is whether or not it gives a police officer too much, too wide latitude and discretion to determine whether or not the ordinance is being violated or not. So I think that, you know, the idea that the officer in your ordinance is charged with the obligation to take some affirmative steps to make sure this is an appropriate or a violation or whether or not any of the defenses or exceptions apply is a good idea. So whether or not initial warning should be employed. Bud, you have any thoughts about that? Let me talk with Buddy about it and see what he thinks, but yeah, I do believe that there should be some parameters placed on the law enforcement officer to make sure that they're not just getting a juvenile just because of their presence and location.
I'm just thinking this, you know, if you see, keep walking around and, you know, they, they live, they're hanging out on College and they live on forty sixth and say, why the hell would we run a bicycles over here and it's fast, you know, you know, that, what, I think.
We're seeing.
We let them go and then they just ride, keep on riding. Wherever they may go, they may be up to no good. We don't know. We've had a lot of petty breakings in my district and we're, that's what I'm trying to help somewhat get rid of a few of the guys.
I've been a victim of that myself, but, you know, just use the word hanging out. Those are one of the words they say was unconstitutionally vague, what does hanging out mean? So it really takes. But it really takes a little bit of, you know, thought to make sure that you get it right and so it's not too vague and people know when they're violating the law and when they're not. But I will come up with something that I, that I believe will pass constitutional muster and that y'all will be comfortable with.
And that's if you want to take action. A lot of these ordinances that have been buried down that were a little progressive or things that are trending, a lot of communities are using this as a deterrent now, so it is very positive. But a lot of these ordinance sits on the books and I appreciate it very much. You knocked the dust off it. That's the only way we take a look, give you a snapshot. Where we are is something outdated, like we're going to talk about golf carts if you have any, if you heard any complaints about that. That's the only way we would expose this. We're not asking for action. But it's just a chance to give us at least some dialogue as to if you want to adjust or if you want to see some, some other alternatives. That is good for us. And obviously, if you want to take action, you can certainly take the next step forward.
Any other comments, questions?
Rob, if you and Chief were to talk about it, let's not, if you can come up with.
Sure. Fair chance.
All right, we want to talk about ATV and golf carts.
How is that next?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, basically the same thing.
Yes, it's the same thing.
It's really the updates, especially at night. There's, we've had, of course, not four wheelers or ATVs at night. If this is anything that you just, you want to take a look at, I know we are a golf cart community, but if there's anything that you want to peek inside to see if there's anything that you want to adjust.
To me, it looked fine as far as the ordinance we have now on motorized carts. I mean, we already addressed nighttime, the nighttime vehicles.
It's on page twenty. Starts on page twenty, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-one. No, I'm on the wrong page. Hold on. We need to pick off parts. That's the curfew. They look the same. Starts on page twenty-five in the packet.
That's very detailed, but if you've heard any complaints, things that you want to take up, it's just an opportunity to discuss it.
Any comments, questions? Wes, do you have any questions?
No, I was just, that's what I was looking at. Let me ask you this, Chief, or Rob. ATVs, do they need to be registered with the city of Tifton to ride up down the streets too, or are they?
They're not allowed.
Huh?
They're not supposed to be allowed. Do they run too fast? Chief, they're not, you can't make them sprint.
Can't make a, like a Ranger?
No, sure. I think speed limit is ten, fifteen mile an hour and they're not going to run fifty, sixty, seventy. They're, they don't, they don't allow.
Yeah, we have twenty miles an hour is a maximum speed.
So they'd be, are they regulated to drive on the road?
No, sure. The ATVs?
Yeah.
No, sure.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yep, all right, thank you. All right. Speaking of Chief, would you like to present the information about the grant application?
Yes, sure. We were given the opportunity to apply for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice System Grant again this year. It'd be thirteen thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars. We got the paperwork submitted, but it had to go before a public hearing before we can start drawing money. And pretty much it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions on that program? All right, and then Jessica, do you want to talk about the crazy Linsley licensing?
Yes, the owner of the establishment has only requested catering, alcohol catering be added to their license. So no, no changes for that. Something that's a major change which needs to come before council.
Okay. All right, any questions, Jessica, on that application? All right, the next item is the ordinance on the reclassification. Do we need to discuss that any further?
Not unless you, I mean, lead to, that was what the public hearing was about and I think Houston gave his presentation.
Right, okay. And then the occupational tax, Pete, you want to talk about that quickly?
Okay, Wayne and Rob, we're going to all kind of just talk through this, but it is time to take a look at occupational tax. Right now, we're not suggesting any changes except for some internal controls. We ran into some, not issues, but things with the ordinance that Rob has been looking at. He has done that and completed some of the adjustments which had to be made. Jessica's been working hard on the application of the tax itself, the classes. Wayne has been scrubbing some numbers. We're trying to just make it a little more simpler and again, we're trying not to have a burden. For instance, we had a couple pages of classes. We had, I mean, two pages just full of, if you make this, we try to calculate that and it was really burdensome. So between them, we've simplified it, what we think. We wanted just to have that conversation with you because, again, it's time to fix a couple things that we need to do in preparation for January when Jessica starts her process for new business license, but more importantly about the calculation to making sure that you know what we're doing and that we're not increasing, we're not suggesting any changes on that front, but just to make it a little more business friendly. Also, you want to talk about the ordinance?
Yeah, just briefly, I mean, what happened, I guess, towards the beginning of this year, there were some questions about collections on the taxes and when I went in to look at the, at the ordinance, there were some issues about the propriety of when we can charge interest on delinquent taxes as well as you can charge a ten percent penalty on delinquent taxes. But our ordinance did not exactly track the state law that authorized us to make those, those charges, so that was something that we had to insert. The other thing, the way this, the system works is that generally somebody will come in, it used to be March one, we've changed that to April one just because of the ninety day delinquency, ten percent penalty rule. The taxes will be due on January one, they'll be delinquent if not paid after April one. According to state law, if you're not paid within ninety days, then you can charge a ten percent penalty and the one point five percent interest. So the way this works is that somebody will come in and when they initially file their, their return, or their, it's based on the last year's gross receipts. So if I came in to pay my two thousand seventeen occupation tax, they would look at my gross receipts from two thousand sixteen and use the two thousand sixteen gross receipts as an estimate of what I'm going to do in two thousand seventeen. The next year in two thousand eighteen, you would file a final return for your two thousand seventeen gross receipts. And then if you overpaid, you'd get a refund. If you underpaid, then you'll be liable for additional tax for two thousand seventeen. And then your two thousand seventeen taxes, then of course will be used as your estimate for your two thousand eighteen return. Whatever reason, you know, we, there was a model ordinance that came out of the Carl Vinson Institute, we did not have that section about overpayment and underpayment. And that was just kind of, I believe inadvertently left out. But that's the way it's supposed to work. You're paying an estimate and then you, you true it up the next year, then you true up and use your estimate for the prior year and it goes on that way. So we changed the due date to April one. That was one of the main changes as well as providing for refunds or collection of underpayments. We also were going to include the brackets, the actual tax brackets, within the ordinance itself, rather than having something separate, a clerk's office that will calculate. That way a taxpayer can look at the ordinance itself, tell them how much the gross receipts are, then they can see exactly what their taxes would be in the ordinance. Those are the, the main changes and I think that, again, what, what mostly Jessica and Wayne and Pete will be looking at is going to look at the, the brackets, the gross receipts, trying to simplify those brackets and, and make them fair to everybody. So that's, that's really the long and the short of it.
I think it'd be very helpful, the next step is maybe the finance committee sit down, we spend an hour just kind of talking about brackets, it's really, it's.
Very confusing.
Very confusing, it's right. And nothing we do will, there's not a one, two fits all, so we're just trying to simplify them a little bit.
Yes, it is. Using maybe the industry standard, you know, if I, let's say I'm a restaurant, you know, and I, I don't know what it is. All of it's based on clients or whoever, but if I was to say I serve three hundred customers, my building serves three hundred customers, the industry standard says, okay, if you have three hundred customers, a restaurant, industry standard is revenue generation is a half a million dollars. And then we just assume that that's what, I mean, is there a way to go break it down like that?
I don't think so. I believe that, you know, the statute on, on occupation tax allows you to use several methods. The number of employees would be a method that you could use. Of course, we use gross receipts and gross receipts is gross receipts. I think the problem, one of the issues that we tried to address in this new ordinance was the verification of those gross receipts. And generally, what we're looking for now is the specific form that you would utilize to the IRS for your reporting, you know, via, if you're a sub S or corporation or partnership. So we're requesting those forms to be submitted to us so we can verify gross receipts.
Do we keep those documents? Do we keep that front page?
I do, but it's not disclosed under item records.
I understand that, but I mean, on the site, so I mean, could anybody just walk into the room where they're sitting?
No, and, yeah.
They're electronically.
Electronically stored?
And you'll see in the ordinance that they, they're confidential, those records. I mean, that's concerned a lot of, you know, taxpayers is, is they don't, they're concerned about this information getting out. But by law, there's required to be confidential.
Uh, how would we find, if we, if we base it off of the number of employee, employee, employees or whatever, how would we verify that number? How could we verify that?
They use a, from what I understand, they still use a tax form, um, you're, help me, I haven't done payroll in forever. What is the format in the year, like for your workers' comp?
Oh, W three, W two, you can use, the forms give is the state of Georgia, the local payroll has a list of employees every quarter, or you can go by W two, if they had, we should be listed like W two, W three, which is a strict construction.
There's a mix of shame, it's a couple different ways.
Now, that information doesn't have the employee social or anything on it, does it?
Not a W three.
See, that's what I think, I mean, my opinion would be, 'cause you do have so many people who, I mean, people's business is very confidential, they don't want, you know, they don't want, they wanna keep it as secure as possible. So they don't want, it could be online, but if something were to happen where information was stolen offline or somebody got access to it that shouldn't have access to it, neither information is out there. And, and then not only that, there's a lot of people who say, well, I don't wanna give that information for, so if we could have them provide maybe something like a W three or, or whatever to show, we've had these number, we have X amount of employees and build that structure off of that. I'd like to at least explore that, not saying that we would go to that, but at least explore it so, you know, we can see which avenue might be easier to go to. Do we have enough time to do that?
Uh, well, we probably would, but I think that, that we need to, you know, start crunching some numbers and, and see what that would play out to be.
Well, I think the finance committee, I know one half of it would like to see it.
You're, you're talking about going to the method of number of employees versus gross receipts?
Yes.
And the calculation?
Yes.
But on the financial side, we, we have to, there's, there's an obligation that we have to meet for the, for the budget itself, so it has to...
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying, so.
And, uh, and how the reporting, smaller cities usually do, the number of employees is much easier preferred method is the gross receipts on a larger scale, so, but I'd love to introduce that to you. The biggest thing is that we have to correct the ordinance, we can keep everything centered going into next year and then take, you know, a good six months to study it if that's the case, but...
Well, I think if it's the pleasure of the council, let's have the finance committee review the findings and, and make recommendations and, um, just like we've done with the budget and some other, you know, other processes, so...
Well, and to say that this is just to explore that option, not to adopt it or say we're gonna move towards it, but what would it look like if we went to that?
I think, like we said, the simpler we can make it for the business owner, the better, yeah, because it is extremely confusing.
Yeah, it is, wanna make it fair though, because...
Yes, yeah.
Number of employees, that could be a wide range in each business, depending on what type of business it is, what their gross receipts are. So, I mean, to, to, you know...
Again, two employees making three million dollars a year.
Exactly.
There's a lot to be said for that. So, but I'll be glad, so I think it's smart, we're just taking the necessary steps so we can get here, up in next year.
Sounds like the city attorney's office to me, but that's (laugh), absolutely. All right, thank you for that report and, um, if that's the pleasure of the council, we'll, we'll take that to the finance committee and, and let them review that further. All right, Wayne, uh, you have a financial update for us.
This is something I wanted to do for Wayne to walk, walk up, I want, one of the things I heard clearly is that from the financial picture, I asked Wayne, uh, obviously just to give you a quick snapshot of the, where we are on the month end, so you have an idea, just percentage-wise, understanding where we are, what's happening with financials, you know, this, it's pretty boring this time of year, but at least you understand that what's happening.
Well, it's good, we need to know, are we on budget, are we not on budget, are we having issues, is there something that, just as...
We look, we look for indicators, you know, and if there's something, until, until it's over, something happened, I wanna make sure that you were aware of that.
Excellent, okay.
Okay, Madam Mayor and gentlemen, uh, I have a prior budget report, uh, and you'll find, and there will be, there's six pages in here, first page is the general fund, then they'll have the hotel motel tax fund, then the water fund, the sewer fund, the gas fund, and then the solid waste fund. Um, the, each one of these is broken down, the revenues are done by type of revenue and this is broken down, and this is based on the Department of Community Affairs, their standard charm accounts, their classifications on each type, and then expenditures are done by department, and, 'cause that's how we, we budgeted, by department, so I, I grouped them by department. Uh, the key factor here, especially on the expenditure side, is one month is approximately eight percent. So if you're eight percent or less, you're in very good shape, so that's what we're looking for right now. Uh, on, in the general fund, uh, total revenues for the, the, the month of July, three point four million dollars, most of all that was, most of that was off of taxes. The big line item there was the, the property tax that was, uh, recorded that was being built out by the tax commission, which we collected over the next several months. Uh, so, with that being said, twenty-five percent of our revenue of the general fund's already been recognized here in the first month. So, but you still gonna have stuff like local sales tax, which will be about the same every month throughout the whole year, and you will have other licenses or permits that won't, will come in later, like our business li, or the occupational tax, most of it will come in January, February, March, once that gets taken out and everything. Looking through the expenditures, in the general fund, the, uh, every department that I remember was, was either eight percent or less, other than one little small one, which was the cemetery, which was at nine percent, but they only had a, they didn't have a very big budget. Uh, but everybody was under budget, total expenditures, uh, in the general fund were seven hundred fifty thousand, some change, uh, net amount was, of revenues over expenditures of two point six million dollars. In the hotel motel tax fund, uh, you had revenues of just under a hundred and three thousand, there was a, just under twelve thousand dollars of expenditures for the month. In your water fund, which is page three, for the month, we had three hundred and eleven thousand dollars of revenue, expenditures of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, net revenues over expenditures a hundred and fifty-three, a hundred and fifty-four thousand there. Uh, in your sewer fund, uh, total revenues, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, expenditures of two hundred and twelve, net there was, uh, revenues over expenditures of a hundred and eighteen thousand. Uh, in your gas fund, uh, total revenues, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight eighty-three, uh, since we're in the middle of summer, you expect this to be a little bit lower than, say, January, February, March, which is in the winter months. Uh, expenditures told, was sixty-seven, eight, net revenues over expenditures was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And then our solid waste fund, which is some, maybe called solid waste collection and disposal, I guess called solid waste fund, uh, revenue a hundred, uh, ninety-four thousand, seven hundred, expenditures twenty-one, net was seventy-three thousand. Uh, if, any questions at this time? And if there's anything you want in, like a little more detail or something, or you have a question, please feel free to call me, co, email me, contact me, and I'll, I'll look deeper into any particular line, area, department or revenue thing you'd like me to look at and I'll get you the answer for it.
Thank you.
Sure, Mrs. Janet?
I, I gotta, I gotta copy, I'll, I'll send to it, I got, we'll get to it.
I like the breakdown on this, it makes it really easy to follow, so thank you for making it...
What's, what you can easily, easily track as we give it to six months is the percentages and it's gonna be a really good indicator of where we were budget-wise.
This is very good.
In my prior job, this is basically what I gave commission, every month we did a, a budget report going over the five largest funds, and, 'cause that's where most our stuff, and it's basically the same format.
Right.
And that way you can look at it and it is a high level view and if there's anything out of place, I will try to make sure I have an explanation why something may be over budget or significantly under budget at a certain point in time.
This is very thoughtful, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions, Wayne, comments?
And I'll be doing this each month for y'all.
Perfect, thank you, thank you very much. All right, Pete, you wanna give us the city manager report?
Yeah, just, just one thing, and this is a, a big one, obviously we're all watching the storm very closely, uh, it's too early to predict on the models, we should have some information tomorrow, I did talk to Jim today, we're, we're talking a lot pre, pre-meeting, uh, which we may do tomorrow or as soon as Thursday, but we'll be working closely with Tiff County EMS about the action plan, uh, as soon as we know more, public safety, public works, utilities, obviously we'll all be at the table making sure that we understand what's going on. Um, to the city, uh, our updates on social media, uh, and notification on the alert system, we encourage, uh, people to sign up for the, uh, the EMA, uh, citizens' alert notification, so as information comes in, uh, they, they can get information via text or email to keep up with, with what's going on, but we'll certainly, when we know some more information, uh, we're gonna go to work and make sure that we get, we get the word out, obviously, what, what we're doing and what we could look for, um, especially on our channel, I think the updates are, you know, good to have. Uh, heavy emphasis on canals, drainage, pipes, problem areas, uh, Jeff and ESG are already in, in full swing, working on those, clearing debris, making sure that we don't have blockages, we know where the problem is, so we are down on the ground now already trying to prepare for that. But for citizens, uh, if you talk to anybody, you can tell them, you know, obviously they need to be informed too, but if you, if we have debris, if they're putting yard debris or anything on the grates in front of their homes, if they can remove it in preparation, they could help us doing that and, uh, maybe we could, um, we could get some, some word out to that. All these little things make a huge difference, especially straw and leaves on top of the grates, so the water could, could run, but shelters, traffic, notifications, all that's forthcoming, uh, but we'll be on top of it and, uh, obviously, you know, take the appropriate action, but I'll have more to, to share with you a bit very soon.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Uh, what's the, Belmont, is the flood, the area where we get the flooding, you, you know what I'm saying, Eighth Street, uh, that area?
Between Eighth and Twelve.
Yeah, between Eighth and Twelve and to, so there's Belmont, uh, Davis, whatever. Let's, are, are we clear, clear in those areas, 'cause those, those are the areas that flood, mostly in, in, in Tifton, so, uh, i- if we could, I would like if, if ESG would just make sure that they...
Uh, I'm sorry, David.
But, I know, but, uh, what I'm saying, uh, if we could, I would like for this to, to look at that area first and to make, you know, every time a flood, it hits those people, so I'm, I'm pretty sure they, they pretty well tired of it, you know, and, but if we could, let's just go to make sure that that area, those areas, uh, 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 the water's running, feeding there.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions? Adios.
I just wanna piggyback on what Pete said on the, uh, citizens' alert, you can go onto, uh, the tiffcounty.org website, go to EMA and click down there and put in your information and log into that, and it'll be sending messages to your phone, texts, just like Pete said, text, phone, email, however you need to do it, but that's how you can do it, is, uh, go into the tiffcounty.org and clicking on the EMA and filling out the alert.
All right, good advice, very good. Okay, if there's nothing else to come up for us, then we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.